Timeframe is not on track, identify why in the progress part of the schedule. Is that all right?
Absolutely. I mean, we've been sort of focused on trying to identify all of the strategies and we were really keen to bring some more rigor around reporting back and making sure that we're meeting timeframes. So I guess we've sort of been concentrating our effort on getting everything in there. So we, yeah, we'll be able to improve on the reporting around the milestones.
Yeah, well, this was the first and I, I mean, I really thought it was, you know, it was excellent. It's really, it's substantially what we were seeking. So I'm really pleased with the progress. Are there any other questions?
I guess it was more around the same page, Leanne, just about, but maybe it would be captured in the workshop. It's more so if you look at something such as the flood intervention policy, my view is I wouldn't want you to take that as gospel, that no need for further policy update. This is just my view. So, you know, we might want to explore that.
No, I think, I think that is actually an example of one that's been achieved. It's out of the policy section now. It's out of the work of, you know, strategy and transformation. It's been transferred to the land drainage recovery program. It's actually being delivered. Yeah. So, I mean, and what I've also suggested is that the achieved ones are just simply reported separately so that they're not, they're not in amongst the work programs. So you've got your, your achieves, you've got your work programs current, and you've got your future work program. So that, that gives us a really good oversight. But, I mean, staff have said, you know, that they can slice and dice this. It's a very, it's simple because it's a computer program. They can pull it out in different way shapes and forms. All right. So I've got the motion moved. I'll put the motion. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed say no. It's carried. Thank you very much and thanks for your effort. Thank you. The next one, whoops, over page, is the communications protocol. And this one also came to Strategium, ah, sorry, to strategic capability and is a communications protocol, which is the no surprises policy between the council as an organization and the elected council. I don't know whether you want to say.
No, so it's good practice to have these. And then, so you have the protocol and then an expectation within people's performance requirements that this is adhered to. It's very hard to be specific because each of these issues will be individual. And so it's hard to actually describe what they are. So it's a general protocol about opportunities to make sure that we escalate and share information in a timely way.
I think this is excellent. It's a really straightforward, relatively simple, you know, clear policy that one would expect to have in place and, and is followed. So, so I'm happy to move this. I have a seconda. Pauline, any questions? Any discussion? No surprises. I'll put the motion. All in favor say aye. Those opposed say no. That's carried. Thank you very much. Notice of motion. Councillor Dion Swigs.
So this notice of motion is just to, it's, it's really to get information out around what's going on in Manchester Street. We've had quite a lot of commentary in the media recently around Manchester Street. I've been asking for about five months to get a clear picture about what's been going on. It's taken a lot of work to just get some information, but I think we need to get the information out publicly in a formal report because there is a lot of misinformation about who owns it, who's doing it, who's delivering it. And I think, you know, getting a clear report around what's happened there and what we're going to do forward is really important.
That's great. So you'd like to move the motion? I'm happy to second it. I'm going to second the motion. Sorry? What? Oh.
I just want to speak to it as well at some point.
Does it, sorry, did you already have a seconda for it? Okay. Did you want to second it?
No, I just wanted to say.
Okay. All right. Okay, okay, okay. So, and, right. So has anyone got any questions? No questions. Okay. Right. I'll, I'll open it up for discussion. Pauline?
Yes, thank you. Look, the ITI committee gets regular updates on the accessible city program in the, in the city. So we're.
Sorry, sorry, sorry. I am going to interrupt because it isn't called the accessible city program anymore. It's called the central city transport program. And for obvious reasons, I want everyone to use that phrase.
Thank you. So, look, we did have a memo about this a couple of weeks ago. An email came out to all councillors, but the problem is that these roading assets have not yet been handed over to us as councillor from Otakoro. And any changes will complicate the handover and possibly void some warranties. But I'm sure that these can, issues can be worked through. And consequently, staff have some actions that they've identified for quick action. For instance, removing permanent pedestrian cycle demand along Manchester Street. And this requires the installation of additional cycle call buttons, which have been ordered. Turning off the bus signals at superstops during off-peak periods and weekends. There's opportunity to manually intervene at the intersections, lightings if required. And currently undertaking modeling to determine if there are any benefits in changing the phasing at Manchester Hereford and looking into changing priority at Manchester and Cashel to allow right turning arrow to the east. So these are all being currently looked at by staff and we're expecting some information back in March around this. So I am supportive of this, but I do remind members that there is another mechanism that could have been brought straight to our committee.
Yanni?
Well, I, I just think we're going to get Carmageddon when the town hall opens, when the convention centre opens, when the.
There's your headline.
You know, when, when the performing arts precinct opens with the Theatre Royal and all the houses being built up and down Manchester Street. We have to look at the inaccessible city on a regular basis and review the key communitive effects of what's happening. And given that Manchester Street is the core boulevard through the middle of it, I, I think we have to absolutely do this. It is so frustrating when people see lights changing when there's no one there. And it, and then having to wait ages for things to change so people can get access. If you think about Hereford Street and Manchester, Hereford Street is now the major east-west route through into the west end of the city. And yet, you know, it's just the traffic signaling and the phasing is just not working at all. So, you know, I, I think we really do need to get on top of what's going to happen with the four avenues, with the northern arterial extension coming into Manchester Street, all the traffic that that's going to generate, with this whole idea that we, we're making things more pedestrian and cycling friendly and better for buses. It just doesn't seem to be working. This is, I think, really important that we review this and let's try and find some solutions because it's just not going to be a satisfactory outcome if we don't.
And Mike?
Thank you. I think everyone around the table would agree that Manchester Street is having a few T E N problems, but we do have to remember the objective of Manchester Street is to create a public transport corridor. And obviously, the point of that is to encourage the uptake of bus patronage. And we know if we don't do that, the consequences will be dire because of the amount of growth that's predicted and the current amount of people that are using, using cars. So what we can do to increase public transport needs to be, be done. And while we do need to do a little bit more tweaking to get it right, the most, the best thing that can happen is for people that aren't using this, coming into the city as a destination to jump onto the one-way systems because they are working. Areas where the accessible city has been completed actually works. We are creating a, a good city. And I think as the leadership team around this, for the city, we need to actually start celebrating some of the successes that we are achieving. If we continually complain about things, then people will believe that actually our city is not accessible and it, it is. People are finding it actually easy to get into town. And people that are using buses are actually finding it really easy to get into town. So yes, I accept that there's a little bit of work that needs to be done on Manchester Street, but we've got to remember what the objective is. One of the biggest problems we've got at the moment is the road user rules prevent some of the simple things from happening. And like I said, in I T E, road user rule unfortunately trumps common sense. And as the I T E committee tried to put through to NZTA was to trial some flashing orange lights. I mean, hopefully if we can get that through, then we may have a much quicker successful outcome to allow cars to actually use a bit of common sense and make sure that the way is clear and let them turn left on a, on a light that's flashing. So I, I think there's some good things happening. There's a bit of work that needs to be done on Manchester Street, but on a whole, our city centre is working.
Anyone else? Aaron, Glen?
Yeah, gone are the days of saying to your friends, let's go for a cruise down the Manch because it would take you forever to get down there. So, which is a shame because it was such a, I mean, it's, it's such a grand project and it looks incredible. And if you're biking along this, cool, because you can kind of laugh at all the cars as you go past because they take so long to catch up. And it's a beautiful facility. Mike's right, it's been set up for buses. Sadly, three and a half percent of the population use the bus. And if we were really serious after the tens of millions, well, probably going towards a hundred million that's been spent on bus facilities, including the interchange and the buses and everything else, if we were to really try and have a go at getting people on the buses, then what we would do, and to back up the infrastructure that's been put in is my point, would be best to trial a former Meryl candidate's idea of free buses. Talk to the government, get them to pay half and we trial it for one year. Just give it a go and see if it works. And if it doesn't, it doesn't. And then we stop spending so much money on buses. At that point, we just put in basic facilities. But if we, if we're serious, let's have a real good slug at it for a year and see how many people will actually get on a bus if they were free. Just an idea.
Sarah, oh, sorry, and then Glen. Sorry, I called Glen before and I'm.
Okay, I won't be long, but.
He looks like a Sarah to me. He looks like a Sarah.
I've got a cousin Sarah. But I, I guess we're never going to have perfect operations on any street. I actually look forward to the day of being caught up in a public transport traffic jam, like a kind of a mini New York with Lime scooters flying down the side. I mean, I'm not too worried about it. I just want our streets to fill up and more people getting back into the central city. So, yeah, yeah, let's go for it. I don't know why it didn't go through the ITI committee, but anyway, yeah, happy to support.
Okay, Sarah.
Thank you. I'd just like to back Dion on this one. I mean, this is just a really straightforward, this isn't about the, the debate right now, whether we like Manchester Street or not. It's just a really straightforward, asking for a report to come to I T E so that the information can be public facing instead of just within the organisation.
Yep. Before I call Dion to close the debate, I'll just add a bit as well because, you know, there, there is a, there is a sense of frustration that I think people feel around an, an ideal and an objective that was set a few years ago and at a time when it was believed that all of the housing along Manchester Street would be completed. And it would be a, you know, sort of genuinely bustling and exciting place to be living and sort of engaging with the, with the main public transport route out of the, out of the city and into the city. And, you know, timing's everything in this world. But the only reason that I did want to say something is, is that when, when the committee is looking at this report when it arrives, I really want them to think seriously about what I think is a, a, a problem around over-engineering some of the streets in the central city. And Manchester Street is only one example of it. And I think we've all, you know, had a good look at that intersection of High Street, Churam Street, and actually, that's all it's an intersection between. And it's an unbelievably over-engineered site. And I think a number of the, a number of the streetlights that have been put on actually suggest that people who are driving cars have no idea how to look for people travelling or walking and crossing a street. And we've done it for years and years and years. And I know that we're not always safe in that regard. And it is, intersections are the most dangerous places for both cyclists and pedestrians. But I think that it's a, yeah, that there has been a lot of over-engineering and I'd like the committee to look at that at the same time. So Dion, I'll get you to close off the debate.
Yeah, thanks. Thank you. Now, this does, this, this issue has come to this point because for a long time, this has been raised. And for a long time, we've tried to get some information around it. And the two days after I put a notice, notice of motion in, we get a memo. And I'm a little bit disappointed that it takes that type of energy to get a memo to come back. Yes, that's when I put it in. Anyway, so I mean, I'm a little bit disappointed that it got to that point. But the, the fact is that we need to get some public facing information about this street. The fundamental failure that I, I see in this whole argument is that we had this blueprint that was imposed on us. And then after the fact was a central city transport chapter. And the transport chapter didn't overlay some of the blueprint objectives as well as it could have been. And that's one of the fundamentals that I've seen in this. And as Leanne said, the timing of the, the projects, at this point in time, it was assumed that the stadium was nearly going to be built. And it's a long way from that at this point in time. So thanks, everybody, for the support on it. I do know what was said yesterday in the ITI committee about me. And I do not take kindly to those kind of comments that were made either.
So.
But thanks.
Okay. I'll put the motion. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed say no. That's carried. Thank you. The next item is Regenerate Christchurch final statement of performance. That didn't go through a committee. No. Linda, are you going to provide some advice on this? Did you want to make some comments first?
Sure, yeah.
Yep.
So this is Regenerate Christchurch's statement of performance expectations for the year that we're currently in. It was received in draft form back in May, 1st of May. Councillors and the Crown shareholders made comments to Regen in the ordinary course. And they then submitted a final to us. But when it came in, there was still engagement going on between, excuse me, between shareholders and Regen largely around the delivery of the Otakoro Avon River corridor work. And that engagement has been just recently concluded, which has brought forward the timing of that by about three months. It was projected to be delivered end of June. Now it's end of March, by the end of March. And that's what's driven the final S P E now that's in front of you.
Excellent. Does anyone have any questions for Linda? Would someone like to move that the report be noted? Glen seconded Jamie. Is there any discussion? I'll put the motion. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed say no. That's carried. Thank you very much. Lancaster Park, future use. Brent? The, there's been a, a suggestion to add some additional wording to the, to the resolution, which is to request staff to hold a workshop with the community board to establish a workable timetable and report back with the, within, with, with, and engagement plan to involve the community, comma, so add a comma, comma after community, local sports groups and other community stakeholders and future development of the park. And the future development of the park. Yeah. Yanni?
Just to get clarity. I mean, I think the key thing here is, you know, I understand there's been a number of other things that have been pressing. So, but going forward from today, if we make this call, just can we get some sense of the next steps in terms of timeframes for a decision around what will go here? Because I think if you look at four, it's still not quite clear. Is that a report coming back to the board or to council? Is there a date for that? But it might be good if you, if you've got some sense of what you see the next steps are so that people can kind of just get a general understanding.
I would see if we can get in, I'd want to come to the first workshop with the board in the new year. And we'll establish those timeframes there. But we, we do need to move this along and do some meaningful consultation with the community. So I would see that happening within the first quarter.
So, so would we, are you seeking some sort of authorisation for your board to, to sign off on the engagement plan and proceed? I mean, I, I don't know. I mean, I'm, I'm not, I'm actually quite open to that. So.
But what I can see is that there's a number of people that have already written letters around wanting to be involved. And I just think clarity around decision-making and process is really important. The, the other thing that I think is even more critical is the demolition's going really, really well. I think our staff have done a fantastic job around, you know, the reuse and just minimizing disruption to the local community from things like dust and, and vibration, et cetera. But, but in the report, there's reference to utilizing some of the demolition material to put back into the future use of the site. So I would just hate for us to get to a situation where we couldn't take advantage of that because we hadn't made some decisions around the future use, even if it was kind of preliminary. But again, I don't have the technical knowledge around that. But I guess that, to me, would be such a lost opportunity if we couldn't utilise.
Absolutely. And we've already done some preparatory work prior to this meeting, looking at what's, what's on the ground and what's, what's underneath the ground and existing car parks, existing paving, that type of thing. So all of that information we'll be taking to this workshop and out to the community with some suggestions.
So I'm just struggling to understand just exactly what we need to add to this, Yanni. I'm, I'm looking for something to help, you know.
So a date for a decision to be made on what will go there?
Well, that, that's part of it. Number four, by holding a workshop to set the timeframes and the process. Yeah.
Right, okay.
Yeah.
Well, then clarity around if that's coming back to council or not is, so the report back. So who is that report back to?
So.
Under the delegations, it will come back here because it's a metropolitan facility.
Yeah, okay. But it, but it may not end up being a metropolitan facility. It may actually end up being a community facility, which is what I suspect it will. The community park. And that would normally sit with the community board.
Yes, and that, yes, that's correct. They would make the decision on the, on the plan.
Well, okay. Well, so, and, and report back to council on the decision-making, on the decision-making, on a proposed decision-making process along with an engagement plan to involve the community. So that, and you, you'll come back to us and you'll say, this isn't a metro facility anymore. This is a local facility. We recommend you delegate this to the board. Or, or it falls now within the delegations if, if we approve it as such. It's only, I mean, yeah, because it's covered by statute, you, you, you may find that there are, there's an approach that we have to adopt. I, I don't know, but.
And I'll, I'll check with legal as to whether it's simple to lift the metropolitan status of it. So we'll, we'll bring that back.
Yeah.
That'll probably be part of the community board delegation's work anyway because there'll be a, a specific list of what's metro and what's not as part of that.
Yeah, but this, this one will require a little bit of specific work because it's got a statutory thing. You come to with that, Yanni?
Yeah, I think if, if we can get a report back in the first quarter of next year.
Yep.
I think the critical thing is the budget. But I'm also aware that some of the sports groups are having to make some investment decisions. And so, you know, working with them, they, they may be happy to fundraise. They may make different investment decisions based on the ability to utilise the site or not. Yeah. The, the only other question I had, I wondered about was the business case for the new multi-use arena. There's, unlike the town hall, there's no benchmark for utilizing the existing Lancaster Park for the stadium as a comparison around costs.
But outside the scope of what I was doing here.
Yeah, no, that's good. Okay.
Okay. So would you be able to report back here by the end of March?
Oh, absolutely. I, I, the intention is now I'll try and get into that first workshop with the board.
Yep.
To kick things off, we'll get a report back as soon as we can.
Okay. So if I just put, report back to the council by the end of March. Okay. So on that basis, would you like to move the resolution, Yanni?
Yeah.
Yep. And Sarah seconded it. All right. Is there any discussion? Yanni?
You know, for, for some of us who have represented this area for a long time, it's been quite sad to see the stadium be, be removed and possibly go to a different location. I mean, that, you know, I think that decision has been made by and large. So there's no point relitigating that. But what's really clear is there's a lack of green space facilities for recreation in this general area. And there's a number of sports groups and codes who would really appreciate the opportunity to have some additional recreational space. And I think, given the statute, given the purpose of Lancaster Park previously, that that is the right thing to do. So I think people will take huge comfort from knowing this isn't going to be redeveloped into either more industrial or a rest home. And that we are committed to ensuring that sporting and recreation can occur here. And I think we should take as wide a view as possible of what that may be. But I think the idea of having something in this area that contributes to people's wellbeing through the, the ability to have recreation is really important. This is a part of the city that's had huge intensification and has a lack of sports fields. So, and recreation space. So I think it's really, really a good decision. I think the feedback's been generally pretty positive around that. And I'm really happy to support this today.
Thank you. I'll put the motion. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed say no. That's carried. But thank you very much. That's good work. The next item is the funding review. And I've completely rewritten the second of the resolutions here. And the, the reason that I've completely rewritten the second of them is that I want to make it absolutely crystal clear that this is not about leaving early childhood centres who happen to have their centres located on council property, which are, the nine of the, of the hundreds of, of centres. But, and I haven't got the, the actual number of community-owned learning centres. So I might just ask that question. So the resolution would now read noting that, noting that nine of the city's community-owned learning centres are, owned early learning centres, I should say, sorry, that's my fault, are located on council property, two on reserves. And that was what surprised me was that only two of the nine are on reserves. I assumed that they were all on council reserve because I couldn't understand why we'd, we would own these properties otherwise. But, but that, that, that is the case. And they're not all the same. And that for several years, these centres have been paying full rental to the council. Some of the rentals seemed rather high in some of the particular areas, as opposed to the peppercorn rental previously paid. And I, I don't have it off the top of my head when they paid a peppercorn rental, but it was before I was elected the first time. So it's quite some time ago that that decision was made. So it's quite some time ago that that decision was made. And that this rental was reimbursed through an annual application to the Strengthening Communities Fund. So the reason that we're doing this is the same reason that we were looking at this in the last term. And that is that the Strengthening Communities Fund, I presume, was made larger at the time to cater for the payment of rent. So it's a pass-through. So we take from one part of, well, we receive from one, into one part of council and take from another part of council. But it's a take from an area where we distribute to community groups who request funding for many and very different purposes. But these have a priority over them because they're paying rental to the council, and that's for no other reason. So what we're asking staff to do is to engage with each of the early learning centres to establish their situation and to discuss a range of possibilities, including the amount of rent they pay and the potential to transfer ownership of the property. For some of those properties, it may not be necessary for the council to continue to own. And it may be that there will be others who would come to the party and assist the childcare centre to buy the property from the council. And then the issue of rent no longer applies and the application to the Strengthening Communities Fund resolves. To fully involve the Ministry of Education in these discussions, the staff have already been in touch with the Ministry of Education and they're very happy to work collaboratively with us and to support the early childhood centres. And then to report back to the council with options regarding the ongoing support for early learning centres. And as I say, of the nine, no two are the same. They really are quite different. And really, all they have in common is that they're in properties that are owned by the council. And we've had a look to see whether other early learning centres receive funding from council through the Strengthening Communities Fund. But most of the applications to other ones, and there are just a handful of applications over the last couple of years that we've looked. And it's just, you know, 1,000 for this project and a couple of thousand for this, whereas some of these rentals are, you know, over 30,000 a year, as you can see from the paper. So, anyway, but there are other issues here. But this is a report that came through a working group that I chaired, so I'm happy to move the recommendation. Seconded by Aaron. So have you got any questions for staff? Sarah, Mike?
Thank you. With the community board allocation that's currently proposed, last time we went through this process, there was quite an extensive process where board chairs were briefed and talked to several times. There were discussions within the individual community boards which fed back into the board chairs. And then that fed through into the current arrangements. How involved were community board members generally in this process deciding the community board allocations this time?
Thanks, Sarah. Firstly, I'd say that every community board, apart from Fendleton-Wymarie-Harewood, has a representative on the working party, that's been considering this for the past six months or so. This matter was discussed with community board chairs and deputy chairs in July and August. In February of this year, two board chairs were included into the working group, the board chair of Linwood Central Heathcote and the board chair of Papenui Innis, to get that board engagement. The working party asked for the range of formulas to be discussed with board chairs and deputy chairs on the 30th of November. So prior to that, a reasonably detailed memo with the background and the options were sent to board chairs and deputy chairs, saying, "We'd like to discuss this with you on behalf of the working party on the 30th of November. Please feel free to discuss it with board members and come back." That discussion happened and the feedback was collated, and it summarized in the report. The working party had its last meeting early this week and really supported the recommendation.
Okay, so when you say that discussion happened, you mean the discussion on the 30th of November? Because I think our board discussed the actual allocations and amounts. I don't know if other boards actually did through the board, so we don't know if the community board members themselves had input. And on that 30th of November meeting, were all board chairs there? Because my understanding is that actually a few were missing.
The two boards that weren't represented, the Sprayden Kashmir Board. The, no, they were the only ones that didn't have a representative there. The others did.
Okay. And when you say that the working party had representatives of all boards, you're actually just saying that there were councillors. They covered them. But the councillors were there as city councillors, not as board members.
The.
Which is quite a different role.
Yeah. I mean, it's a working party and they were.
The board representatives were the two board chairs?
There were two board chairs as representatives of boards. My take on the discussions in the working party, and we have working party members here, that perspectives were raised through the debate on this on behalf of boards and how boards may feel. Apart from that, I can't really tell you too much more.
Now, Mike?
Thanks. So the current formula that has been started up last year, wasn't it? So it's had one full year and it's the second year now. And we're looking to change it. So is it broken? Because obviously there's two wards that are going to have a big change in their funding amount. So we've got obviously a lot of information from the last financial year to have a look at how the boards spent their money. And there was a reason why there's a 40% equity funding in there. Are you saying if we're looking for a different option, that that original option is broken?
It was certainly raised at the workshop and the allocation meeting for the Strengthening Communities Fund. It was raised by the working party. And there were a number of concerns, specific concerns raised. The primarily around the degree to which there was an equity weighting. The working party asked officers to provide a range of options. And over a range of meetings, they considered the pros and cons. And the report kind of summarizes, albeit at a higher level, the tenor of debate around that.
But was the last financial year's spending from community boards from this fund analysed?
Yes, it was. And a detailed breakdown of the spend and the amount of recipients of the board decisions were made available to chairs and deputy chairs in advance of their meeting on the 30th of November and specifically considered. And, yeah, the officers in the working party had access to that information.
Okay. So in that case, did it appear that the Fendleton-Wymarie-Harewood board did not have enough funding and potentially the other board had too much funding?
I, the feedback tended to be there was support for the boards retaining the ability to allocate funding. There was definitely support from all board chairs and almost all working party members for an equity weighting. The difference in opinion was over the amount of equity. And generally speaking, boards with more needy communities favoured a higher equity weighting. Boards with, at first glance, less needy communities favoured a lower equity weighting. This was, from my take anyway, reflected in the working party deliberations and the board chairs and deputy chairs deliberations on every time we've discussed this. So the tenor of the feedback was very similar. That gives us confidence to say that we've got enough information to present to council for you to make a decision on this.
Phil?
Thank you for the work. And also, I'm pleased with some of the, well, the changes that have been made and the recommendations now. But just want to check, particularly around the early learning centres. Just that clearly wanted to be a range of options to be considered, especially since the problem seems to have begun at the time when the policy really around peppercorn rents was changed and the costs are unfairly distributed now. I'm just wondering, can the concept of the peppercorn rents still be included among the options? And the reason I ask that is clearly I'm pleased there's discussions with the Ministry of Education. But to get that right in terms of a different funding equation will take some time. That's why I'm just really asking, can the option of a peppercorn rent be considered for some where there is sufficient need?
So I would say yes. My intention when I have these discussions is to look at everything. Everything's on the table. And as Mia said before, they're clearly all very different. And we'd like to come back with a different package for each one, whichever one suits best, and that will be a consideration.
Thanks, Gary. Pauline and Jimmy?
Just to clarify, option one is the status quo that we carried.
Yes, it is.
And you said the working party met earlier this week. So the two community board chair representatives, were they supportive of option one?
The, the, the community board chair of the Linwood Central Heathcote was very supportive of option one. The current option. The board chair of Papenui Innis, I can't actually remember.
She wasn't there?
Yeah. No, she wasn't there, so, yeah. Sorry?
No, this was just the final comment. I mean, it had been to the community board meeting. This was at our working group meeting.
And you said most of the working group supported option one on earlier this week?
No.
If I did, that was a mistake. No, the recommendations in the report that were passed by the working group, the recommendations for option two. So the working group, and if I've made a mistake on that, I'm deeply sorry. The working group were happy with the recommendation for option two to go through.
Right, thank you.
I think option two is a compromise. I mean, it's clearly a compromise between returning to the way it was. But I think people forget that the key local project funding has now been redistributed to the individual community boards. So it's not a direct comparison to the year before, which was slightly different again. I've got Anne and Jimmy.
Just back to the early learning centres, I'm just wondering, is there any advantage to the centres in the way that we're doing it at the moment in terms of they apply for funding for the rent that they pay to us? Is there any advantage, like tax avoidance or something? Do they get anything from it?
No.
Is there nothing? So.
It really is a case of robbing Peter to pay Paul.
It's right, it is.
Intently, it is, yeah.
Right.
Can I also say, Anne, that a couple of years ago, Claire and her team met with the early learning centres and they said that they actually felt quite vulnerable having to apply to a contestable fund just before their rent was due.
That's right.
Yeah.
So whatever which way we go, we have to find a better solution, yeah.
So is there any other place that we can get funding, this funding from, apart from, for their rent? Is there any other places that we can get it from?
These are nine early childhood centres. Where do the rest go?
Yeah, well, that's right.
Yeah, so the Ministry of Education funding for early childhood education is substantially different from what it was when this was originally established. So that's why we need to have the ministry there and we need to work through each individual case. I suspect that some of the properties, certainly those that are not on reserves, potentially could be sold, you know, for whatever amount. And we may be able to find additional, you know, capital support from, you know, philanthropic funding options, you know, right? Or I don't know, you know, there'll be other bodies that would come to the party and that would solve that problem. But at the moment, it is exactly as Gary's described. You've got this expectation that we will meet it, that it's a prior call on the fund, but they still have to apply every year just before it's due. So it's not, it's not a good model.
Yeah. So really, our intention is to support those areas that could do with an extra staff member, given the needs perhaps of the community. That was the intention originally, wasn't it? To identify those places that perhaps were not well represented for early childhood and could do with a bit more resourcing. So council stepped into, I guess it's an equity issue. So I guess it's for me, it's about how do we address that issue still in a different way and get that outcome.
Again, it's really interesting to look at the maps and look when this was decided and look at where ELCs are now and the numbers. So again, all of those things come into, let's have a look at each one individually and look at all the secret centres and come out with an option. We can still support, but we're supporting at a level we should be supporting it.
Yeah, and I guess also recognizing that some of these places are working very hard to keep their fees down to represent the need in the community. So that's what we're wanting to support. Yeah, thanks.
But I mean, you look at the range of rent and they go from $18,200 in New Brighton Community Preschool and Nursery all the way up to $42,900 in Wollstone. Yeah, so, I mean, there is, there is work to be done. Okay, Jimmy?
Thank you, ma'am. The day before yesterday, the Springs Community Early Learning Centre, because they are one of nine, used the early learning centres, sent an email to me. They received the information from SPAR regarding to this funding, whether we'll continue or not. It looks like they are quite worried about it. So based on today, our decision, when the start were, you know, the feedback to make regarding to this.
So I contacted all of the early learning centres on Monday night. So that's your response. And there's been a few councillors have been approached. I've spoken to three since and been able to explain over the telephone what we're looking at. And they've all been reasonably happy with that response. I've said to them all that early in the new year, I want to make times with them and with MOE and we will go out and meet them. This is not going to be dealt with in the next three or four months. This is going to be a longer process and we will have a look at a priority of where we start. But definitely first thing in the new year is when we'll be looking at the first one. No lag, getting on with it.
Good. Yanni?
So just trying to get my head around the kind of the point that councillor Davidson was raising before around the funding. What's the impact likely to be if we go with the recommended option two versus option one in terms of groups that miss out? Do we have any sense of the impact that that will have on groups that are being funded currently?
So can I, can I make a comment? As we looked at applications, we looked at an application in one ward for the same role as we did in other wards. And the wards that had more money would give more to that application for exactly the same role. So I guess there's an argument there around the role suddenly, depending on where you are and depending which ward you are in, the same role could get a bigger allocation. So in terms of losing out, I don't think you'll lose out. You will get some that get less money, but will likely bring it in line with other parts of the city. Now, I know that's a bit controversial, but that's what the research showed us.
So, but when I look at deprivation index, the new one that's been developed, and you can see very clearly that there's a real big area of deprivation on a multitude of factors. That seems to be the ones that are. that seems to be the ones that are going to get the funding cut. And, and it kind of, it really worries me. So I just, previously we've had things like the KLPs that have equaled that out. We've had, I think going back even before that, we had a social, I can't remember the exact name, but some sort of social needs based funding. There seems nothing in here that will be available to address that inequity in our city if we go with the preferred option.
Could I, the, the only thing I could add to that was the, the board chair of the Linwood Central Heathcote Ward made that point very, very, very clear throughout the length of the consideration. She also made it very, very clear at the, at each meeting of, of the board chairs. So that, that view has been, has, has been represented quite substantially.
Right. So, so, but it's been.
No, she supported option one. Yeah.
It's, it's, um, yeah, okay. So it hasn't really been embraced by the working party. I, I'm just trying to understand the logic from the working party around places like Bank's Peninsula getting, you know, more than twice as much per capita when it's one of the wealthiest, least deprived areas of the entire city, while we're getting cuts to the areas that are the most deprived. What, what was the rationale behind that?
Yeah. Well, the firstly, the, a rural community adjustment was added to the, the apportionment formula over the past year. And that was again supported by the working party. It was also considered and supported by board chairs. A change to the original recommendation has been made by the working party because they felt that if option two was preferred by council, the funding given to Bank's Peninsula under option one would remain. So the funding going to Bank's Peninsula would not go up. They would not go from twenty-three dollars a head to twenty-five dollars a head. And any option, they would stay at twenty-three. And an amendment has been made to the recommendation, the original recommendation to reflect that. So the working party did have some concerns and, and did provide a response.
So effectively, if you live in a rural area, regardless of wealth, you're entitled to more. And if you live in the poorest areas, you, you, you aren't. So is that kind of?
Sorry, that's not a question.
No, that's not a question that staff can answer. So, and, and it's really for, for debate. And I, you know, I'm very mindful of the fact that our colleague, the representative for the said area is not here. I'm, I'm, I'm actually wondering whether, and I'm now going to argue against myself, that we defer the resolutions three and four. And, and I'll, I'll explain why. This attempt of mine to review the funding, the way we fund and our relationship with other funders in order to get a much more joined up approach to funding so that the, what makes the city a city is able to, you know, have the reassurance that the city is, is going to be part of the, the network of, of, that comes together to, to provide that funding. It's never going to be a hundred percent. There's always going to be a partnership approach. And, and, and that's, that's what I really wanted to see happen last term and I want to see happen this term and I really want us to get it underway. The review of this has come from those that feel that the rating system that we've got, which is based on the capital value of their property. And it is the rating system that New Zealand has. It's not a rating system that we can choose to ignore. And it means that there is a weighting and that already applied when we collect the rates. So, and, and, and I understand that point of view. I also fully understand the, the equity needs across the city. I mean, I of all people, having represented both Central Christchurch and the East, understand that very well. So with the agreement of councillors, I'd like to refer items three and four back to the, to the working group and we will organise a workshop in the new year. And, but I really would like us to proceed with having a, an approach on the Capital Endowment Fund. I would like us to resolve in a very equitable way the early learning centres' relationship with the, with the Strengthening Communities Fund. And I really want us to approve a limited trial of a three category framing fund, fund, frame, funding framework, which enables us to actually partner and, and see whether this approach would work. And that, that to me would be the focus of the debate then, rather than what is a, what is a controversial issue because, and it is a challenging issue. And not everyone around the table agrees and I'm not looking for unanimity around the table. I'm just looking for a way to deal with the issues that I think we could get staff on to and come back to this issue fresh in the new year. I've got, I've got Sarah and then Mike and then you.
Thanks. I just want to make the point that we're currently buffered by the Community Resilience Partnership Fund. And so I'm assuming that that makes any assessments that we would like of how the funding's working quite difficult because things are going to pop up from different boards all over the city. They meet the fund and that means that boards don't use to have to use some of their strengthening communities currently. When does that, when are we expecting that fund to kind of run out? Because that's going to be our crunch point really for.
Well, I'm, I'm actually, I don't actually recall anyone saying that if people had access to one fund, they were no longer entitled to another fund. And, but, you know.
It's that we're using it as a bit of a buffer at the moment for.
Well, it's not supposed to be being used as a buffer. It is supposed to be being used for a purpose. But anyway, I, 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 I think perhaps that fund could report onto the, into the working group. It hasn't been part of the terms of reference thus far. But if we could get the fund to report on, if, if people are generally agreeing to three and four being, you know, referred back to the working group, then we would ask for the implications for that Community Resilience Fund to come onto it as well.
When I, when I said buffer, it was just that some projects that we might have funded through strengthening communities met the criteria and so they were.
Yes, I know. And some, some community boards decided not to fund projects for things that they've always funded them for under the mistaken assumption that that fund would meet the, the cost.
Sometimes they're things that have popped up post-quake when that fund wasn't available. So, yeah.
Mike?
Just wanted to check. So one of the things we hear from a lot of the community groups is obviously the whole stress around the process and the fact that sometimes it gets delayed and it really pushes them to the edge. Just delaying this over the Christmas break to go back to the workshop, is that going to have an impact on the timing of everything?
It won't, it won't affect the timing. What I, what I do, if, if, if you want to do, well, you're going to do this in the new year. The earliest it can be done would be great because I need to have the equation for you as community board members. You know that you like your budget at the start and so I want to be able to give that to you. But we've probably got in reality a couple of months until next year. If you're all aware that you might not have it straight away.
I think what, what Gary's saying is, he said it wrong. The, the imperative is to have a, a budget available to boards and council on the fourth of March when the, the funding schemes are, are opened. The, so if we, the council can resolve the allocation, and I believe it can be, by, by that time, the, the, the risk has significantly diminished.
Is there, is there a, an allocation that we could make in advance of the, of the decision? You know, like a precaution?
I mean, thinking on my feet and it's dangerous. Council can keep with the current allocation and we can proceed on the current, which is option one. And should council make a, a change, we can, we can change.
No, I, I, I think that there isn't, you know, I, I, look, I would really rather that we just defer this to the new year, get an update from Mary's group on the resilience fund and come back to council. So, but we'll do that as quickly as possible.
Yeah. As long as, as long as we're all aware of the risk, and I think we, we obviously are.
Yep. Yanni?
I mean, I think the questions that Mike started with are actually really important. And that is to see, like, we don't get any sense of the request for funding to each of the boards. We don't get a sense of, I know the working party may have, but I would really welcome a workshop so we can actually understand that. And the other thing, I mean, the wider question I had around this funding review is, did, did you actually think, think about what are the things that we're funding versus things that we might actually just directly do ourselves? And I just, I guess I raised that in the context of the education review that's come out, where what we find is groups are spending so much time, I think what they found teachers are spending so much time doing things that aren't about teaching, but are about administration, you know, and a whole bunch of external things, which would seem to apply to some of our community groups having to do things like applying for funding, et cetera. And I, I just wondered whether there'd been kind of any look at, you know, if we've got X amount of community development needs across the city, then why doesn't the council just centrally fund that? Why do we go into a contestable process that creates a whole bunch of bureaucracy around some things that we would probably always fund or, or be quite committed to funding? And then the second question was, was there any discussion around like a ten million dollar capital allocation to community boards so that they could actually do capital works and prioritise with local communities?
No, we haven't done the delegations yet. We are going to do the delegations.
Okay. So no, that wasn't looked at?
No.
It's outside the council-approved terms of the brief of the working party, Yanni, I believe.
Yeah.
Because I think there's a grey line between.
Yeah, but.
Funding and capital.
I'm deferring just the strengthening communities funding.
Yeah.
Yeah. So that's three and four.
So the rest is kind of.
All right. So are people generally happy with the deferral? As my seconder, can we, you won't agree to that?
Yeah.
Seconded what you had.
So, okay. So.
And I'm still happy to be the lowest funded ward in the city.
Yep. So if you're not going to agree to change, oh dear, can I, can I? Well, I'll have to invite someone else to second.
Well, me and Phil are happy. We are on that.
Well, maybe, maybe if we just. This is, this is so frustrating. So could I, could I please, so if, if Phil and Glenn move and second an amendment, which is number six, refer decisions, and it's, do, do we need to name the causes that they are or? Or have you moved them?
I think amendments are taken first is my understanding.
Yes, I understand that. But let's just, let's just do the amendment. Okay. But were you normally, oh gosh. Sorry. I just wish I could have a little bit of give and take sometimes. Do I have to really do this by way of amendment, Aaron? Do I really have to do this by way of amendment?
Oh. It's Christmas. No.
Okay, thank you. All right. So that's.
We have mince pies?
We don't have to do it. Okay. Thank you. I, I appreciate that. Thank you. That's very. Thank you. Okay. So, so, so now we've got, we've got the full resolution. So can we just take that away from the screen? Okay. So we've got the, the, the recommendations. So, so this is simply now on the management process for distributing the Capital Endowment Fund, noting and engaging with early learning centres, looking for an, an equitable outcome for them. And, and then trialling a new way of doing things with, with funding in our city. That's, that's now the motion.
Can I just ask one more question on that one there?
Yep, sure.
What if, if we were unable to attract any co-partnered funding on an application, would we then look at it just ourselves?
Goodness me.
Sorry, I've just, I've just got to be careful that we're not going to.
Yeah, I know.
Compromise any of these applicants.
No. The idea is to work with up to three of the Christchurch Organisation category and up to two from the umbrella organisation category. And the trial process is the development of a prototype application, multi-year, the assessment, the decision-making, the reporting process, and then engagement with other funding organisations. It's not conditional on having other funding organisations. It's working with them. We did have a workshop on this. Okay. So I'll put the motion. It is all of them except for three and four which have gone. All right? I will put the motion. All those in favour say aye. Those opposed say no. That's carried. Who wants to be recorded as a no? You don't really want to vote against it?
Uh, yeah, because I liked what we had before.
That's fine. No. Okay. All right. Aaron, you want against? Right. I always remember that television series, you know, Confused, You Won't Be After This Episode. Right. Central City Transport, Hereford Street, Manchester, appointment of hearings panel. Would someone like to move this? Mike, seconded by. Glenn, I'll put that motion. All those in favour say aye. Those opposed say no. That's carried. Hearings panel, report to council on the dangerous and unsanitary buildings policy. Ref, your moment to shine in this one.
What was this about again? This was a, a very technical update, not to be confused with the earthquake-prone buildings or the building act itself where there are amendments going. We only had six submissions. They weren't all relevant to this particular policy, but useful discussions. The proposed policy has been slightly amended by staff, nothing too significant. So I'm happy to propose this to the council for approval.
You'll second it? Um, Tim? Oh, sorry. There's some additional stuff. Authorises the chief executive or her delegate to make any typographical changes or to correct minor emissions, et cetera, and resolve that the new policy comes into force on the day of the council's decision to adopt the policy. So that's today.
Yeah, I think this happened at another hearings panel. This is kind of standard thing.
Right. Okay. So it's been moved by Ref, seconded by Tim. I'll put that. Yep. Yanni?
So one of the things that keeps coming up, and I just wanted to check kind of if there's any, was there any submissions on it? Is the derelict buildings in the suburbs, derelict houses, as is where is, or just not had earthquake repairs? And so they're, they're more of an unsanitary issue rather than a dangerous issue. Is, is this in any way going to help us deal with those or do we need another work stream to do that?
That was raised by the business association in terms of the central city, but it doesn't particularly fall under this policy. I don't know if staff want to comment on that, but.
Yep. Robert?
We, we did have that discussion and that's why I'm saying that there are a bunch of different building policies, bylaws and acts, and this was quite a specific technical change to this particular one.
Correct, then the answer would be no. It, it, it doesn't do a lot for ISOL buildings.
It's things like overgrown vegetation.
Doesn't do a thing. Nothing.
That is an issue. That is an issue.
It's a healthy...
And it was brought up in this, but it's not specific to this particular policy. But it is an issue.
I know we're doing the district plan staff, and I should have raised it the other day when we had that briefing, but I do think it's an issue that we need to get some urgent work done on.
Completely agree.
Agree.
Right, okay, the resolution has been moved and seconded. I'll put the motion. All those in favour say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. That's carried. Thank you. We've got the, oh, Appointment of Recession Committee, and we've got a resolution here, appoint a recess committee comprising of the mayor or deputy mayor, or if they're both unavailable, another councillor delegated by the mayor and a minimum of any three councillors. And the quorum is the mayor or deputy mayor or the mayor delegate to be authorised to make, no, and a minimum of any three. Quorum mayor, what do, quorum mayor? Quorum is, the quorum.
Three.
Is three?
Yeah. Mayor, deputy mayor, four.
No, it's, no, the quorum is obviously...
Half the council.
No.
No, you've got to have...
And a minimum of any three councillors, so...
So that's four. So that's got to be the quorum.
No.
But I don't know why we've got the quorum.
But we're not naming the members before you count.
Appoint a recess, and a minimum of any three councillors. Presumably that's the quorum. Yeah. And note that, and this is to make any decisions, actually, I thought there was a phrase, that can't wait, you know, like, that can't wait until there's a meeting of the council.
Urgency, under urgency, something like that.
3.1's got the wording in the document. We wrote it, I thought we'd written it in.
It cannot wait until the first ordinary meeting of 2019.
Right, that was, yeah.
The wording of the recess committee is about that recess period?
Yeah.
Where the report goes to...
Yeah, to make any urgent decisions of the council required during the period. Yep, that's fine. Okay, I'll move that, seconded by Vicky. I'll put that motion. All those in favour say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. That's carried. Thank you. We've done the chief executive's report. What are we up to? Resolution to exclude the public, and we've got a list of people that are asked to be, to remain after the public have been excluded for various items, all listed there in the resolutions. So I'll move that, seconded by Vicky.
I said you got 45 separate, or did you send my vote recording to 45?
Okay. Well, there might be others who want to do that as well, so...
That's the parameters?
Yeah. So I'll put that motion. All those in favour say aye. Those opposed say no. And Yanni record against item 45. And Dionne?
Against 46.
And Mike against 46.
And 45.
Right, that's carried. Thank you.